I will call the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. And may I ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the first item is to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting dates for calendar year 2021. Okay, can I get a motion? Thank you, Tom.
I'll second it.
Okay, and this is listed on the agenda and the backup. The meeting dates are January 4th and 25th, July 12th with a lot of asterisks, and the 19th, February 1st, February 22nd, August 2nd, 16th, March. Mine's a little jumbled in my phone.
Can I make a motion to waive the reading of the dates since they are listed there? Thank you. I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So this is to approve the meeting dates that are listed on the agenda. Is there any discussion or comments about it?
I don't.
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Okay, item.
I don't know about any of you, but it feels impossible to feel like we're already planning for next year and looking forward to it.
I know it does. It seems like a... Wow, can't believe a whole year went by. Item number four, the budget, I'm going to ask for a motion to waive the reading of the budget meeting dates for town.
I'll make the motion to waive the reading of the dates for the budget hearings, et cetera.
Or seconded.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Is there any discussion on that item? Any changes?
No.
No, I'm all good.
Okay, all in favor of those meeting dates?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Brenda, is there, is the idea at this point in time, obviously with so many changes, not holding you to this, but is the intention to keep meetings to WebEx until some date uncertain, until, I don't know, obviously I think it will reveal itself, but is that the intention for now?
Yes, that's been the guidance from the CDC and the State Health Department, just minimizing the exposure. And I would like to announce that I'm taking my own advice. I have not been feeling well. And so I've been staying home. I'm calling in from home. And I've been advising our community to do the very same thing. And so I hope if anyone's not feeling well, they limit their interactions and they stay home as well. So yes, until we were assured that it's safe, I think this is the best way to proceed forward for our community.
All right, thank you. I feel better.
Thank you. Next item, the appointment to hear and can I get a motion for the to hear and consider and act upon the following appointment? Fair TV Commission, which requires RTM approval. Mark Joella of Shoreham Village Drive for term 720 to 723.
So moved. I will make the motion to approve Mark Joella to serve on Fair TV.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I see Mark is on the WebEx. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you. It's good to be here.
And thank you for stepping up to serve our community in this capacity. As you're probably aware, we have quite a few boards and commissions in town. And we have a very volunteer-centric-based community. And so I appreciate you stepping up to serve in this capacity. And I'll open it up to the board for any comments.
Yeah, thank you. This has been a position that's been vacant for a bit of time. And so when Mark almost magically appeared before us as an interested candidate, I was thrilled just based on looking at his resume. And then when speaking to him about the position and about the board, I was thrilled because I think, Mark, you bring such a breadth and wealth of information and background knowledge and fresh eyes and just a willingness to serve and step up. So thank you for magically appearing before us. And we really appreciate it. And it's great that you're new to service and stepping in in this way. So new to service in this town, in this capacity. So thank you so much, and I look forward to working with you. And I hope you enjoy yourself along the way.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Best of luck in the new position. We've been very fortunate with Fair TV to date, and I'm sure you'll add to that legacy. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Excited.
Mark, do you have anything that you wanted to say before we vote on your appointment?
No, I'm just very flattered to be considered. And it's not magic that brought me here, but good timing. And I'm very happy that my personal background might be of use and of value, and I look forward to it.
Well, we could all use a little magic.
That's the thing. Don't take away our magic.
I say, take the magic, Mark. Take the magic.
A holiday story.
There you go. Okay. Okay, well, if there's no further comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously, and congratulations, Mark.
Thank you very much.
Our next item is item number six.
What Mark may not know is because he is new to service in this capacity is that he does not have to feel obligated to stay on this call.
There you go, Mark. She's being very diplomatic.
I'll hang out and learn.
Okay, well, you're welcome to stay, but Nancy just wanted you to know that you're not obligated. The next item is town planning and zoning. This requires, director requires RTM approval to hear and consider the Act Upon the Following Resolution, Resolve the Town of Fairfield Sell the Property Known as 216 Riverside Drive to the adjacent owner at 196 Riverside Drive for the sum of $22,500 by a quick claim deed. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
I'll open it up. Our TP&amp;Z director is on the line, Mr. Went, and also town attorney who can fill both of you in a little bit onto the background of this.
This is Jim Went for the record. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. The subject parcel is a wedge-shaped piece of land. It's approximately 5,300 square feet in size. It's not large enough on its own to be a building lot. The town acquired this parcel through a tax foreclosure back in 1958. The owner of 196 Riverside Drive is the intended buyer after a public bidding process. The buyer's existing property is non-conforming to our regulations at 91, a little over 9,100 feet. In this area, we'll make the combined parcel a conforming lot for total lot area. We also don't see any foreseeable practical future use of this small site for the town. So for those two reasons, the Town Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously on December 8th to recommend the proposed sale of this property as noted in the call. And I have nothing further. If you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer those.
Good question. How was the amount arrived at?
I don't know exactly the answer to that. There was a public bid that went out. I believe the 22.5 was the minimum price in that bid. So I don't know. And there was an appraisal, I believe, in your packet. But I don't know why, what the minimum bid was on the, how that was set.
Hi, this is Town Attorney Jim Baldwin. Just, that's correct. There was an appraisal done on the property. That was the amount of the appraisal, and therefore that was the minimum bid that went along with it. And this was the only bid that was received by the town.
I just wanted to know that. Thank you very much.
And I just had a question. Was there any discussion of breaking it up if abutting properties? Or was there no discussion of that, or it just didn't even come to bear because of the?
That's a good question. This is Jim Went again. There was some discussion. The prospective purchaser was the one that approached the town to see if the town would be interested in selling. There was a WebEx meeting, I forget when it was, several months ago, with all of the abutting neighbors, making them aware that this was going to take place. This was the only successful bidder. We did receive an email on the eve of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting from the adjacent neighbor on the other side of the property, the Lindamans at 224 Riverside Drive. They're aware of this prospective sale. They support their neighbors' proposed acquisition.
Okay, perfect. And then there's no, with that neighbor, the Lindamans that you just mentioned, there's no issue in terms of access easement, any like, with the new purchaser, they won't have any challenges?
No, they have a manageable relationship, and there may be some future relationship where the prospective purchaser grants certain rights to use a portion of the property. But in terms of the towns, we thought it best that that be a private agreement amongst the parties and rather than have a multiple-person transaction. So all of the neighbors have all their cards on the table, and we trust that they'll work forward in faith.
And two quick questions. It sounds like, you know, with the meeting, that that may be sufficient. But I understand there was supposed to be a certified letter, and I just was curious if we've documented that that went out, or is the meeting kind of supersede that need for that, or did both happen? Just more curiosity than anything.
A certified letter?
I understand that at the last, at the Board of Selectmen meeting, when this came up in the prior administration, it was like delayed, the vote was delayed, or purchase was delayed because they wanted to make sure that the neighbors had a certified letter of the intention. But if there was a town, if there was a meeting of the neighbors, I'm wondering if that... I just don't want to, I'm thinking about dotting i's and crossing t's just down the line. Since this is between neighbors, I just wanted to make sure the town was covered. Apparently, the town was supposed to send a certified letter with the sale, but...
I don't have any information with respect to a certified letter, but I know that there were all of the adjacent neighbors who were on that WebEx meeting. And like I said before, we do have an email from the other.
Okay, so there's record of it, I guess, is the point. And then my final question is, does the purchase amount then just go into a general fund? Or for instance, could we put this back into like land acquisition? Could RTM move to do that, if there was interest in that?
I'll leave that for other parties to address. That's not...
Yeah, no, I don't, that's sorry, that's not for you. I think that's for... For House Attorney Baldwin.
I think it does go to the general fund, Nancy. And just for your other question, Attorney Baldwin was a part of those meetings with the neighbors, representing the town as the town attorney and was making sure that everything was, you know, on board and legally appropriate. As far as Jared might be able to answer this, but I believe the money goes into the general fund.
That's correct. Money goes into the general fund.
I know it normally would by default, but the question is, is there benefit perhaps to considering putting into the Land Acquisitions Trust Fund, for instance? Is it something that, you know, RTM might want to consider making that motion? Or would it happen here at the Board of Selectmen level if that was something?
I personally wouldn't want to muddy this deal with trying to allocate funds outside of the normal process where it usually goes. I think those are discussions we can have for the budget cycle regarding where we put money in specific accounts and what we want to invest in.
I agree.
Okay. That said, I have more curiosities, as I said. Thank you. I have no more questions.
Tom, do you have any additional questions?
No, I'm all good. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further additional comments or questions, I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is number seven, Engineering Manager to hear and consider and authorize the purchasing authority to enter in to the proposed contract with Malone and McBroom Incorporated for consulting engineering design services for grassmere post neighborhood improvements. An RFP 2021-25 in the amount not to exceed 120,800. Funding for the design service contract is available. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Thank you. We have our Engineering Manager, Bill Hurley, on the line, as well as our Purchasing Director, Gerald Foley. And I will open it up to whomever wants to start presenting.
Hi, Ken, if that's okay. I just wanted to, this is Bill Hurley, Engineering Manager, Town of Fairfield. The approval of the proposed contract between Malone and McBroom, which is now SLR, and the town is required by the Board of Selectmen per town charter. Malone and McBroom SLR was selected with the highest matrix score amongst three consulting firms. The town attorney and engineering department have reviewed the contract and standard terms and conditions, which were revised per the town attorney comments. So I mean, this is the same grant that was presented when the state gave the town the commitment to fund. It's the Grassmere Neighborhood Pedestrian Improvement Project, and it consisted of new and wider sidewalks, ADA ramps, some road narrowing signs, pavement markings, curbs, driveway aprons, and potentially pedestrian crossing warning lights or pedestrian signals, and so maybe some streetscape improvements. So that was just a little recap. But what's really before you is the contract between the town and Malone and McBroom, and now SLR.
Great. Does it open up to questions now?
Yes, absolutely.
So Mr. Baldwin, you've reviewed the contract per Mr. Hurley, and you're all set on standard terms and conditions?
That's correct. We made the same modifications to this contract as we did with the prior contract, and those are in place.
Thank you. Did this contract go through the normal vetting process through our purchasing policy, Mr. Foley?
Yes, yes, it did. Gerald Foley, yes, it did.
Quick question for you guys. Malone and McBroom, is this the group that does the analysis for the Board of Education? They seem, their name is familiar to me, Malone and McBroom.
I don't know that, but they are the ones for the Rooster River Detention Study.
Okay, so we've worked with them before, and we've been happy with their, we've been happy with their results and with their professionalism, et cetera, et cetera, the quality of their work.
That's correct.
Okay, how long is this supposed to take?
My feeling is it's going to be about eight months. I can check on their schedule. They did submit a schedule. And if it's something significantly different, I will let you know. We do have to go get some DOT permits. So it is possible to go a couple of more months. But usually, you know, the eight to 10-month is pretty standard. If approved, we could issue a PO and probably get them started sometime in January. The one caveat I do have to admit, though, is obviously if there's snow on the ground, the work does involve some surveying work, and so there might be a couple-week delay, you know, based on weather conditions.
So Bill, to set expectations here, when, you know, they're going to go out, they're going to do their work. It's going to take eight months, maybe more. When do you expect that we'd be able to start actually seeing the improvements in the neighborhood?
We're hoping we could put the contract out to bid next winter so that we could try for, you know, spring construction next year.
Spring of 2022?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay, and this is done, this is entirely funded through a grant from the state. Is that correct, as I recall?
Sort of. You have it half-right. The design the town has to pay for, but 100% of the eligible construction costs are covered under the Lots Grant Program.
Right. And when did we allocate these funds? I'm just trying to recall this.
Let's see, I have it here. February 2019, the town boards approved $200,000 for design cost.
Yeah, okay. I was trying to remember. And this is, it's a fair amount cheaper. Any reason why? That's a good thing, but is there any specific reason why it's 80 grand cheaper?
Well, we have, for the 200,000, that may also cover if we have to do any right-of-way takings or easements. And it also, you know, covers the contingency and things like that. The three firms, this one was the cheapest in terms of pricing, and the others were around the one, if I recall, about 150, 160 range. So our estimate wasn't that far off. Malone and McBroom has done some streetscapes. They did the one for what we call the railroad corridors along Mill Plain Road and some sections of Southport. Yeah, that was a couple, a decade or a decade and a half ago. And they are reputable firms, so we should have no issues with them.
Got it. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Nancy, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay. All right, seeing no further questions, call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Bill, and thank you, Gerald.
Thank you. Thanks, Jim and Gerald as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jim.
Our next item is eight. This is to hear and consider and act upon the request from the Town Attorney and Bond Counsel for an amendment to the bond resolutions associated with the board's December 14th, 2020 approval for the special appropriation in the amount of $5,129.28 for the costs for purchasing land and existing buildings on the property known as 309 Burberry Road. And there's the attached bond resolution. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. I'll second it.
Very good. We all opened up. Town Attorney is on the line.
Yes. Hi, everyone. Again, this is a technical change that was considered necessary by Bond Counsel when it was brought to his attention that the language as it existed originally, that you can see before you, it's without the highlighted language there, seemed to read as though it was issued only for the purpose of the Walter Fitzgerald High School, when in fact, it is for more than that. Obviously, the Walter Fitzgerald High School was kind of driving the bus on this. And what got lost in the translation to Bond Counsel was the fact that there is another part of the property, significant portion of the property, that its use is yet to be determined by the town, but it is not going to be dedicated to the Board of Ed or for that high school. And therefore, this clarification was considered necessary, and that's why it's before you now. It's also going before the Board of Finance for their approval at 6 o'clock at a special meeting. And tonight, it's going to be heard by the full RTM.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any comments or questions.
Nor do I.
Okay, very good. Seeing no one has any further comments or questions, I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Baldwin, we're getting there. Our next item is item number nine. To consider and act upon the tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector in the amount of $7,392. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Any comments or questions?
Nope.
None for me.
Nor me.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And next, we to hear and consider an act upon any other business, which shall properly come before this meeting. I would like to just mention that I sent an email out to the heads of our Board of Finance and RTM and to both of you regarding the governor's signed executive order, which has allowed us to extend the tax deferment. As you remember, the towns were required to adopt either the deferred option or the low-interest penalty option. This is also the case. We must implement one program or the other. According to the executive order 9R, no approvals are needed from any other town bodies to implement the new tax deferment program. EO 9R says that as long as we, as the town, is doing the same tax break program that we had authorized earlier in the year, it can be done administratively. So for reference, for everyone, 71% of the towns opted for the deferment over the low-interest program last time around. And given the timing of the new deferment, it will have no impact on this year's budget, and tax revenue will still be received during this fiscal year. The impact on cash flow will likely be relatively small based on our experience with the last deferment and can be easily absorbed into our current and projected cash balance. Our tax collector estimates that approximately 10 million was deferred during the last program. However, the deferment payments were ultimately received within three months based on his analysis and overall tax collections. I just wanted to share that. And then I also had included a link to the executive order with the full language. And I just wanted to give you both, and also anyone in our community who is listening, just an FYI that we are going forward with this. And our tax collector is going to send out, he's going to post a notice about this, and we're going to send out postcards to our residents as well.
Great. Thank you for the update. I appreciate it.
Okay. Let me go back to the agenda. And just to give a quick COVID update, we did get new guidelines. We were waiting, and I included my newsletter on Friday, quarantine guidelines that were handed down by CDC and then the state. And I put those in, and we posted those on the town's website. And also, the Health Department has posted that information. And other than that, we don't really have any additional information. I would just like to say that, you know, obviously, it's been asked repeatedly that people, you know, refrain from gatherings for the holiday season. We talked about this during Thanksgiving as well. We did see a little spike as a state and as a nation after Thanksgiving. And they've repeatedly, CDC and other health professionals and experts have asked people to limit their gatherings during the holidays so that we can get through the rest of this without too much spikes in our cases. Obviously, it's exciting. I just wanted to say that our Health Department has been working literally around the clock so hard to prepare for the vaccines, which will be distributed to the priority list on healthcare professionals and first responders. And I just want to take my hat off once again to our amazing Health Director, Sans Clary, and our Health Department, who has just really put in so much, so much effort and time over this past almost 10 months. And if there isn't any other items, does anyone want to bring up anything others or ask any questions about what I just talked about?
Thanks for the updates.
No, I'm all good. I did want to take a moment and say, Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. I know that's a little belated, as well as Happy New Year to everybody. And let's hope that 2021 is much better than 2020 and a little less eventful and stressful than 2020 is.
Amen.
Amen to that. Yes, we've all had, we've all had a heck of a year, that's for sure. And I look forward to seeing you both in the new year and looking for brighter, healthier times. Without a doubt.
All right. Thank you all.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
I will second it. I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Take care, guys.
Take care.
Take care. Happy holidays, everybody.
You too. Bye-bye.